Welcome to today's Baltimore County Legislative Session Number Seventeen for the July Sixth Council Meeting. We will start with bills for final reading and vote. So if everyone would go to Page One, Bill Fifty-eight dash twenty, I believe we have Rob O'Connor, the Director of OIT, and we also have, oh, we have two speakers for this. We have Colonel Foulton now from the Police Department to speak on the NIBRS conversion grant. Are both of you with us? I see Rob, but I don't see the Colonel. I don't even see Rob.
I'm here. Rob?
I was just gonna say, I just want to thank you, Madam Chair, and our council for expediting this bill and getting in is quite important to the county police funds and to the Police Department, but I am gonna let Colonel Foulton Hour speak on this bill.
Okay, Colonel, it's all yours.
Yes, ma'am, and I echo that as well. This is that supplemental appropriation in amount of $728,499. It's a grant to the Police Department by the Justice Assistance Grant, a portion through the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention. We're requesting that the council approve and accept this money. The department supports the FBI and the Criminal Justice Information System in changing and upgrading from the UCR, the Uniform Crime Report, to the new NIBRS system, National Incident-Based Reporting System. With this grant award, crime data collected by the department will be enhanced and more detailed on reported incident as required under the new NIBRS laws. The enhanced data will contribute a better understanding of law enforcement needs within the county, the state of Maryland, and the nation. There's no matching funds or anything necessary. This is just a straight grant from them towards this program, and we are already underway. August first is the kickoff on this, and we've got about two-thirds of the agency trained on this new system.
Do you mind if I speak for a second?
No, sure. Go ahead.
Thank you, Colonel Foulton Hour. This is, this bill is the federal $250,000 grant. For her, actually opened to surprise that we will be presenting a $728,000 state grant as well. So both of these have been huge wins for the county. Today is the federal $250,000 grant, but we will be supplementing, asking for additional appropriation of $728,000 grant from the state. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the members? Here, and I will move on to the next item. Can you all see me? Okay, because I can't see myself. I made my, I made my thing disappear. I'm on my new Mac Air, and it's been a challenge. That's all I'm gonna say. But I haven't lost any of you. I just can't see me. Okay, how about we go to fiscal matters on Page Five, and I believe we have Tom Kiefer, our Acting Director for the Department of Public Works, to talk about the contract.
You do. Madam Chair and Council, good afternoon. The administration is requesting approval of a contract with EcoFlow to provide packing, removal, and disposal of hazardous waste for general acceptance facilities and for amnesty days, which may be scheduled at the county's discretion at various county locations as needed. And the contract commence April fifth, 2020, and continues until August thirty-first, 2020, and may not exceed $25,000 unless approved by the council. If approved, the contract will continue through April fourth, 2021, with three, which will renew automatically for four additional one-year terms with the option to extend the initial term or any renewal term in additional 120 days. The contract does not specify a maximum compensation for the first year term. However, it's estimated the total compensation of $500,000 for the entire five-year, four-month term, including the renewal and extension periods. This contract is a, provides a service that has been provided by DPW for quite a number of years to get rid of household hazardous waste, and we have regulatory obligations to meet with regards to disposing of that material. And I'm hearing feedback. Is that caused by me, or?
Are you on two devices?
I am not.
Okay. We were, we could manage to hear you, though.
Okay.
Feedback, though. Are there any questions or comments from any of the members? Or Acting Director? No? And how's things going?
Things are going well. It's a, there's, get to see many things in a broad view of what goes on in the county, that's for sure.
I bet. I bet. Okay, if there's no questions, thank you. Tom, thank you.
You're certainly welcome.
Take care.
All right, definitely.
Chair?
Oh, who was that? Oh, hi, Izzy. Thanks for joining us.
Thanks. I just want to apologize to the members and to the tardiness. I detained, not detained in the sense of doing something illegal, but detained in a gridlock situation at a community food distribution, and so we had to resolve that in an urgent way, so.
All right.
I apologize for.
Well, thank you for your efforts with the food distribution, and you were only a little late.
I was gonna have to recommend an attorney for him when you said he was detained.
Okay, next we'll.
It's Tom Bosworth.
Yeah. We're still on contracts. The first contract is on Page Nine, and we have Deborah Shindel with us for property management.
Thank you, everyone. Good afternoon. I'd like to introduce our first contract for, that we are proposing to the administration. We are requesting the approval of two contracts with Mark Solinsky from, otherwise known as Grizz, and Bender Incorporated to provide an on-call demolition service at various locations in the county. This is a contract that is a one-year with a renewal automatically for four one-year periods with the option to extend the initial term or any renewal term at an additional 120 days. This was a competitively bid process, and the compensation for both contractors combined may not exceed $3,834,981 for the entire five-year and four-year term. It's pretty hopefully simple. Does anyone have any question in regards to our demo contracts?
Well, I just want to make it clear. I said Page Nine, but we were on Page Thirteen, right, Deb?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
But that's fine. That's fine.
I always get out of order.
Comments or questions about the demo contract on Page Thirteen? Okay, what are you gonna move on to, next, nine or seventeen?
I'll go back to nine.
All right, thanks.
I like to keep you guessing for some reason.
That's good. Keep coming toes.
This is also a contract that we're requesting for approval for two contracts for total environment concepts and petroleum services. This is to provide on-call service, fuel tank services, at various county-owned locations where we operate and maintain above and underground fuel tanks. This is a contract that also was competitive bid with a one-year, with a renewal of four additional one-year periods with the option to extend the term of any renewal of 120 days. The total compensation for both contractors combined may not exceed $825,000 for the entire life of the five-year contract and the four-month term. This, again, is a very important contract. As you can imagine, we have various fuel tanks all over the county, above and below ground, and it is important for us to continue to maintain them for environmental purposes to make sure that we're just safely keeping the fuel in our county properties.
Okay, any questions or comments from the members? Okay, we'll go down to the last one on Page Seventeen.
Thank you. This last one is request approval for two contracts to provide an on-call tree trimming and tree removal and stump removal services throughout the county. The two contractors that were awarded this competitive bid were Excel Tree Expert Company and Forest Valley. They are previous, they have done previous work for the county. It was, again, a competitive bid. It is in an automatic for three one-year periods. The compensation for both contractors combined may not exceed the approved amount of these services for the entire contract term. The, both contractors combined total $3,576,876 for the three-year and nine-month term of this contract. And again, as you all are very much aware, we, this is a contract that we use every day, ongoing, in all of our parks to help, you know, we just never can tell when a tree is gonna fall, and we need to get it out and remove it. So this is an ongoing contract that we just need heavily.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the members?
Yes, Madam Chair. Izzy, again. Shindel, not related to these contracts, but I just wanted to thank you for your fine work on the Pikesville Turf Field and moving that forward. So, thanks. It's something that's much needed in the community, so thank you for your great work on that.
Absolutely. Looking forward to doing the project.
Thank you.
All ready.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And I want to thank you for your help with the Callington Ridge Park Bridge that serves both Councilwoman Bevins and my district. You do a great job, Deb. Thank you for all your professionalism.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilman Catch?
Yes, I want to thank Deb as well for, earlier this week, last week, I mean, I got pictures of the Sound Barrier that has been constructed at the animal shelter. It's complete. Actually, it's good-looking, and I thank Deb for all her efforts to get this project complete. And all I can tell you is the neighbors are very happy, and I want to thank you very much for your leadership in this project.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all for your support. It has been a great effort, and I can't tell you how much I enjoy what I do. That's why I get all excited about sending you all the information of what's going on, and I think it really works well. So thank you all.
That's awesome. That seems like just yesterday, Councilman Catch, that we were listening to howling dogs on tape recorders at our work session. I can't, I can't believe that wall was done already. So that was, that is great work, and I hope that the neighbors now.
It was my idea to have you, everyone, subject to hearing that recording on a number of occasions.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, so that didn't take too long, so I hope that you all have a better quality of life now.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilman Jones?
Not to be outdone by my colleagues, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank you, Deb, for all your hard work and efforts. You've been, I'm not gonna point out any specific items, because you've been an all-star all around and an MVP, and I guess thank you for being you.
Thank you. I appreciate all your support. I really do. And I'm a great boss. I have some great bosses. I work with Stacy and Ed, and I can't beat that team either, so thank you.
I can't see Stacy right now, but Ed has a big smile on his face. Yay!
You remember that, Ed?
All right, thanks so much. Thanks so much, Deb.
Have a great day.
Yep, we'll see you on Monday. Okay, now we'll go down. We're still looking at contracts, and we'll go to Page Twenty-one and then Twenty-five, and we have Laura Riley from the Department of Aging with us. I think she's with us.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the council. The administration's requesting approval of a contract with the Image Center to provide contractual staffing to assist the Department of Aging's Maryland Access Point, our Hospital-to-Home Program, and Nursing Facility Program education in order to link disabled individuals to services and programs. They serve as the recognized center for independent living for Baltimore County, so they really do have an expertise that we don't have in dealing with adults with disabilities. The contract commences July one and continues through June thirtieth, 2021, not exceeding $25,000 unless approved by the council. If approved, the contract will renew automatically for four additional one-year periods with compensation not to exceed $100,000 in any contract year or during any one-year, during any renewal period. So a total of $500,000 for the entire five years.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from any of the members? That was easy. Ms. Riley, thank you for all you do for our senior citizens of Baltimore County. It's greatly appreciated by all of us.
We're doing our best.
Yeah. Have a good day.
Okay. I had another contract.
Yes, you do. That's kind of Page Twenty-five.
Okay. The administration's requesting approval of twenty-four contracts with healthcare agencies to provide adult day services to individuals fifty-five and over. Each contract will commence July first, 2020, continuing through June thirtieth, 2021, not exceeding $25,000 unless approved by council. If approved, the contracts will renew automatically for four additional one-year periods. As you're probably aware, adult daycares are closed right now, so once they are reopened under Governor's orders, we will, again, start subsidizing people to participate in the adult daycares.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Laura?
From the members?
Laura?
Councilman Catch, go ahead.
Yes, Laura, I also want to thank you for the job you do, and I, I want to give you some information that I think will make you feel good. You know about Broadmead's program to help people who want to remain in their homes?
Yes, sir.
Recently, they've been asked by the State Secretary of Aging to expand their program statewide. That's how effective it's been to, to assist and help older people to stay in their homes. And I want to thank you for your support of the program, and of course, Shindel at Broadmead for this program. The good that it's done just is immeasurable. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Yes, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Izzy? Right, quick question on this. There are twenty-four vendors that are listed that provide adult daycare. Are the contracts, do the contracts vary in dollar amount to each of the vendors? And if they do, does it vary in the number of participants, or how does that work?
So the amount does vary because it is up to the individual client to select which adult daycare they want to take part in. So we don't do that for them. We allow the client to participate based on where they would like to attend and what fits best for them and their family's needs. So it will vary based on where the client chooses to participate.
I see. So there's a set cost per client, and then client selects which facility there is best suited for them?
Correct. We use the Medicaid reimbursement rate that we also then apply to the, to the daily fee.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Riley. Have a good day.
Thanks, you too.
Okay, now we'll move down to miscellaneous business. If everybody will go to Page Twenty-nine, with Resolution Fifty-nine dash twenty. Councilman Quirk, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. This resolution is a planned unit development for Patapsco Fields. The council should have received in your emails different community letters of support, including one from Pastor Linwood Bithia with the Liberty Community Development Corporation. And that's obviously mutually exclusive of Set the Cat's Spray, but I know Dr. Linwood Bithia was very supportive of this planned unit development. And another one was from, you know, Parkview Trail Community, a community that is in my district, as well as, of course, Liberty Community Development Corporation. Parkview Trail Community supports it. I have a, a letter of support from them as well. Another community that borders this planned unit development is called Chadwick Homeowners Improvement Association in my district. I have a signed letter of support from that community. Another community that borders this not far away is Stonegate at Patapsco, and I also have a letter of support signed by that community association. So this is a planned unit development that has been under review candidly for the last eighteen months. It wasn't something that I entered into or even considered lightly. It was something that took about a year and a half of the developer and his representatives meeting with the communities and trying to work out good public benefits and trying to work out a good plan that the communities in my district could support. So I know we do have some speakers, and I appreciate the council's consideration. As you know, planning a development, we vote yes for this. It doesn't mean it's done. It just means it's allowed to continue along this process. Couple other things I did want to mention that I think are important, especially with this pandemic. I do think it's more important than ever to start getting jobs moving again. You know, so I do think the investment itself is very important. And, you know, we also need more housing. We have a limited supply of housing now, and more and more buyers are looking for homes, having trouble finding homes. So I do think that's important as well. And this planned unit development is on my side of the district, and, but right across the line is Councilman Jones' district. So we really almost share this type of project because literally it's so close to both this district and mine. And, you know, I worked very closely with Councilman Jones, who is also in support of the investment in trying to get jobs moving again. And so I do appreciate your help and advice on this, Councilman Jones, and thank you, Madam Chair. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilman Quirk. And as we all know, I've only had one PUD, but I know some of the members have had many PUDs. This is when work really starts. Just the introduction of the resolution doesn't guarantee anything. That's when you really start working with the communities and, you know, working on the community benefit and whatnot. So it sounds like a lot of work has went into this already, and eighteen months of preparation. And I appreciate the work, because I know all the work that goes into the planned unit development. Ms. Belkash, are you gonna handle the speakers?
Yes, Madam Chair. I have located during this time in the work session all of the attendees who have signed up to speak. However, I have one person who I cannot see on our attendee list, so I just wanted to make a reminder before I call the first speaker, excuse me, before I call the first speaker, that you are calling in by phone. You cannot testify by calling by phone. You need to log on via the Internet. So just a reminder to everybody. First speaker, Madam Chair, is Sarah Cops.
Okay.
And let me.
And will you remind the speakers of their time limit for their testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair. So everyone has three minutes to speak. I will start a timer, which is located at my desk, and you will hear a loud beep when your time is up. Ms. Cops, are you there?
Yes, I am.
You may begin your testimony.
As residents and homeowners of the Parkview Trail Community, my husband and I are opposed to County Council Resolution Fifty-nine dash twenty. The PUD proposal states that this development will assist in reducing the jobs to housing imbalance in the area as well as providing a housing choice of modern amenity-filled community. Construction of the Patapsco Glen Townhome Development is already underway, and it is a modern amenity-filled community of approximately 380 townhomes that will place additional stress on Fairbrook Road, Johnny Cake Road, and in particular, the intersection of Johnny Cake and Hallfield. Surely, the Patapsco Glen Development will reduce the alleged jobs to housing imbalance. We don't need another 182 townhomes on Johnny Cake Road. Furthermore, we, along with other residents of Parkview Trail and the surrounding Johnny Cake Road and Fairbrook Communities, have been in support of the Greater Patapsco Community Association's zoning change request, Issue One Seventeen, which requests the zoning change from BMIIM to DR 3.5 on the parcel just west of Patapsco Fields. However, the County Planning Board indicated in their virtual hearing that they do not support that zoning change because of the possibility of Security Boulevard being extended. But if this PUD is approved, it blocks the extension of Security Boulevard. So there seems to be a little bit of a communication breakdown here somewhere between Planning Board and County Council. So we respectfully ask that County Council not approve Resolution Fifty-nine dash twenty. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker, Madam Chair, is Mika Baldwin. However, as I stated in the beginning, I cannot find this person on our attendee list. If they are calling in, they will have to log on via the Internet. So I'm gonna go to our next speaker, who is Janet Anderson.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman Bevins, Councilman Quirk, and honorable members of the County Council. My name is Janet Anderson, and I am a homeowner in Parkview Trail Community in Windsor Mill, and I speak against Resolution Twenty-nine twenty. I think one of the key issues here is, Councilman, you're receiving some information from a selected group of people, and the majority of the homeowners are either not receiving the information or not receiving a full picture of the information. This develop, Patapsco Glen and Patapsco Field is within walking distance of my home. What's the plan for Patapsco Field, which I knew? We weren't informed. We weren't informed directly of any community input meetings by the developer. Had it not been for a neighbor who put a copy of the PUD in my door, I would not have known about this. I was quite surprised. It was mentioned at a meeting in February, almost casually and passing, that there's going to be some sort of community benefit. No details. And then yesterday, at 3:20 PM, the homeowners received an email from the HOA Management Company that was signed by the board, and it stated, and I quote, "After two years of negotiating, we finally have a resolution. The owners and legal team of Patapsco Fields have agreed to funding our community projects. Parkview Trails will be built out, will build out our tennis court with a playground, sitting pavilion, and one basketball goal for the youth." So that all sounds great. My question again was, why was everyone not involved in this decision and discussion? And why do I oppose it? First, the tennis court has already been removed. It just, almost like the coats in the middle of the night, came down quite suddenly. We talk about installation of picnic tables and grills. Every homeowner has a yard. There's a pool and a community center across the street. Patapsco State Park is down the road. So why do we need another area for people to congregate and outsiders to come in and bring trash and noise? I don't know. Play equipment for the tots. That sounds like a great idea, but when that came up a few years back, we were told that our insurance would increase significantly. So the basketball net, that's not in the PUD. That was in the email. The grills is in the PUD, but was not in the email. So we can't trust that we're getting the full picture and accurate information. According to the county's guidelines, it appears that there's supposed to be a post-submission community meeting. I got no notice of that, and in speaking with my neighbors, no one was informed of that, if that happened. We could have asked questions and got in the full picture if that meeting had been held. So again, it appears that this is being driven by a few people and not by the combined homeowners association. So I oppose it. I ask that you not take any action at any time, and that you ask the developer to hold this community input meeting so that all the homeowners can weigh in and come up with an agreeable report for that plot of land. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Todd Warren. Mr. Warren?
Yeah, I first want to say that I'm the first district representative on the planning board, but I'm not speaking on behalf of my position as the representative of the planning board. I'm speaking as a twenty-two-year resident of Parkview Trails and the community. I'm speaking as a 22-year resident of Parkview Trails and the community. And my enjoyment of being part of a diverse population of workforce housing. I have a career that would allow me to buy pretty much any house in the county, but I love the community I live in and the neighbors that I have. And as a passionate member of the community, looking to continue to develop more affordable housing for our community, Baltimore County has approved 600 building lots as of the end of 2019, but built 1,200 homes. So we have a shortage of availability of housing, and we have a history of segregation, economic and racial segregation, that has been prevalent way before my 22 years here in the county. And I feel that we utilize environmental or traffic to try to stop same development. So I'm greatly in favor of this development. I think the community has been kept very well aware. There are signs up that we have meetings every Tuesday, first Tuesday of every month. People don't attend those meetings. That's not the fault of the community. You've got to be involved. You've got to stay involved and find out what's going on. Again, I'm greatly in favor of this, and I wish that I'm going to try to have a resolution countywide that we look at the impact of segregation on the county and the impact of the hurdle on the county. And this is a prime example of people utilizing traffic and the environment to harm people of color and people of less fortunate income. So I ask the council to please approve this and also to raise the resolution to look into the impact of segregation on our community. I feel like Martin Luther King said it best, if we don't, not saying anything, it's being complicit, and I'm tired of being complicit. So I'm speaking out. With that, I end.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Warren.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Linwood Bithia. And... Mr. Bithia?
Yes, I'm here. How are you?
I'm well. You may begin your testimony.
Okay. Good afternoon, councilmembers and everyone that's listening. My name is Linwood Bithia, and I'm president of the Liberty Community Development Center, or LCDC, and we're located in the old center at 6901 Security Boulevard. We are in favor of the PUD, our Resolution 5920. As a part of who we are and what we do, we believe in healthier and stronger families, and we believe this works directly in line with that which we believe to be our healthier and stronger families. Also, we believe this will bring needed funds and attention to the community, and it will help with making this community better. Lastly, we think that it's going to be a positive change, and we need positive change in this area. So we look forward to it being here. So we are definitely in favor of it, and thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Donald Campbell. Mr. Campbell? Mr. Campbell? Let me try the other one. Mr. Campbell?
Yes, I am. I'm here.
Okay. You may begin your testimony.
Yes. My name is Donald Campbell, and I'd like to thank everyone for giving this opportunity to voice our opinion from our community. I'm the president of the Chadwick Homeowners Association in the community, along with some of the surrounding community members. For years, as being association president, I've been in the community for 20 years. Most of them years, I've been the president of the community. We have things on our agenda, which always come up in topics, which is schools, traffic, infrastructure. And then the other things are like gateway signs and beautification. Now presently, the schools in Chadwick is being constructed as we speak. Traffic had always been a problem throughout our community, always. Infrastructure, we didn't have some infrastructure things done out of the community, which was fine with curves, lighting, improved driveways and things of that nature. But when it comes to things that really the community want, which is beautification and the gateway sign, we didn't fill out many grants, about two really, to try to get this accomplished, and we couldn't. Well, we are definitely in favor of this part that's for Patapsco Fields. In this, and I've never seen it and heard it before, where a developer comes in with the insight of our Councilman Tom Quirk that's in the first district, that said that they had to have community involvement, and it's been a win-win situation. The developer came in, we sat down with our views and what we wanted, sent them back to the table many a time. They came in with funds that they're going to put back into our communities, to enhance our communities. Now, in my association in particular, they have also promised and showed us the layout of what it's going to be. And it is beautiful. Now, we know that some things with traffic and everything is going to come, but change is going to happen. I was a union representative for a Teamster Union for many years, and change do not come real easy for some people. But in this time, this change is going to improve our community. And like I told them before, with this land being there, it's going to be something. But I've never heard of the developer putting that much money back into the communities. Now, they're talking about enhanced townhouses. They're not no low-quality townhouses that's going on there. There's not the beautification where there's little patches and stuff there. These are real enhancements that they put in, and they're putting money back into our communities. And I'm telling you that this is a real positive thing for our community.
Mr. Campbell, I'm going to have to ask you, Mr. Campbell, to finish your...
What I'm just telling you is that we totally support the part resolution.
Okay. Thank you for your testimony. Next speaker.
Madam Chair, Miko Baldwin reached out to me via email, to which I replied, as you know, and I'm awaiting for that person to send me a phone number that they're calling in from. I were a bit confused, but once again, you cannot call in by phone and testify. You have to do it via internet. So I'll... Give me one second.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
While Chris works on getting the other speaker in here, I feel compelled to offer my support for the PUD or at least speak up. I've always supported it. One of the things that was said today about being solid and being complicit, silence is consent, and I guess feel like it's important that I speak up in terms of, number one, I'm in support of Councilman Quirk's. This issue has been going on for like 18 months. We are at a place right now where, you know, this PUD or this development will be a plus for the community. It'll be a plus for overall economy in terms of all the electricians and engineers and plumbers and all the people, the roofers and carpenters, all the people that are going to get a much-needed boost after this COVID-19 and putting everybody on the sideline. It'll help out the economy, it'll help the community. There's community support. There's an extensive list of community support items that the developer is putting back into the community, many of which will benefit the larger community, not just the development under which they're building. And so I feel compelled to say that, you know, I think it's going to be a good thing for the community and a good thing for our larger economy. And I guess I want to thank Councilman Quirk for his leadership and bringing everyone together and basically making the developer basically give, from what I can tell, he's going to give more than he probably would otherwise have to. So I think that's all good for the community.
Thank you, Councilman. Ms. Bell Castro, have we found the caller?
Yes, we have.
Oh, good.
Miko Baldwin?
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. You may begin your testimony.
Thank you. Before we begin, I wanted to first to say, can you please confirm what time the email link came out for this call? Because I think that's what the confusion is before I begin my testimony. We didn't receive the link until late yesterday afternoon. Am I correct?
Ma'am, we don't, the council office does not...
No, I'm just, I'm just, I know. I'm just, I'm just wanted to set that because it was mentioned that we just received it, and the reason why is because the county sent it late. Not saying it's no one's fault, but this is a good thing. I just wanted to confirm that, that's all. But I can start my testimony.
I just want to confirm, the council office, as I was getting ready to say, does not send out a link. We post our meetings, which was posted on Friday, with the link to the work session today was posted on Friday on our website, on our virtual work sessions and hearings page.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I'm sorry, but I received the email at like 1:32 o'clock, so I appreciate it.
No problem.
But in any case, my name is Miko Baldwin. I am with Parkview Trails. I am the HOA current president, and I just want to start off by thanking the county council and thanking Councilman Quirk for all the hard work that he has put in to bring the communities of Fairbrook together in the security west area of the county. We, this is so well-deserved, and I'm agreeing with what everyone is saying. However, I am in full support of the PUD. We have never, ever once, since I lived in the community and even when I was a renter in the community, we have never once had anything for our children to do but a tennis court, and they were banned from the tennis court. So I approve any improvement that we are building for our future. And I think that's what we need to put on paper, that we are building for our future. We are putting money back into the community. We are improving the area. We are in Social Security, the government district of the world, and people are moving steadily into our area, and we have nothing to offer children and families with children that are coming into our area. So to add a community park and the upgrades that we're doing to our area is phenomenal. I don't, I know that there's going to be issues with parking or not only parking with traffic, but I do know that Parkview Trails alone has 611 units. So if we're just talking about a mere 288, which it was downsized, but was building now, if we're talking about a mere under 500 development and Parkview Trails is the biggest, then I think that we need to kind of bend a little to allow everyone to have a win-win situation when it comes to building out this PUD. So again, I 100% the build-out and 100% the support of this PUD, it's going to add so much value to the community and set precedence over what we're trying to do in Security Mall. Thank you.
Okay. Was that our last speaker?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. Before we conclude today's work session, Ms. Secretary?
Madam Chair?
Do you have any... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Councilman Quirk.
Okay. Yeah, just very briefly, thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I wanted to thank, you know, people like Miko and Miko Baldwin from Parkview Trails, Don Campbell from Chadwick Homeowner Improvement Association, Pastor Linwood Bithia, who does a great job with Liberty Community Development Corporation, Stonegate at Patapsco Community. Candidly, with this plan unit development, when the developer first approached us, we told the developer, this is not even close to happening. You have to go out, you have to talk to the community, you have to really work with the community, see what we can come up with that the community can support. And admittedly, you know, it was quite a challenge, and it was a lot, a lot of work. I mean, I can't even tell you how many hours and hours, countless hours, the developer and his representatives spent, working together with leaders such as, you know, Don Campbell and Miko and Astro Bithia and Stonegate Patapsco. This is truly a community effort. If you look at the planning and development, no one can say that there's not a sufficient public benefit. There is public benefit and public benefit and public benefit because the real right job was done by the developer and his representatives, truly making this a community planning and development. And I know there were a couple of people, of course, that had concerns, but I did want to note for the public record that those people are part of a bigger community of what's the actual community associations wrote letters of support in writing. So I know we're not going to be able to get everybody's support. I mean, I think that's virtually impossible in county council on any issue, by the way, on any issue. But I do feel a lot of gratitude for the community leaders who all stepped forward to work with the developer in a lot of collaborative approach, to try to come up with something that truly came from the community, and I believe has strong support in my district and Council of Manic District 1. And I did want to thank Councilman Jones. You know, I think in this tough economic time, we cannot be afraid of the council to say, yes, we support jobs. Yes, we support investment. Yes, we support more quality homes because we need them. I mean, we have to drive economic development, especially right this pandemic. When this economy is on its knees, we've got to get things moving again. So I do appreciate my council colleagues' consideration, and if anybody has any questions, please give me or Councilman Jones a call. And thanks again, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Councilman Quirk.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman Jones.
You know, I, again, I want to thank Councilman Quirk for giving me an opportunity to participate, but also, I guess, want to highlight, I talked about the jobs and the benefits to the community, and one caller just reminded me when they said, "Security Mall." If you look at Security Mall, what it is today, all of this goes into the decision when it comes time to redevelop that mall. When people are going to invest millions and millions of dollars, they want to know how many people are in a mile radius, a two-mile radius. All, you need people to drive these things. And I think everybody would agree that we want something really, really nice to happen there at Security Mall, and this is just all the ingredients that go into making that happen, and it'll show that this community is thriving and not on the decline. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Mr. Boswick?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, do we have announcements to make?
Only that the legislative session for this work session will be, I think, Madam Chair, you may have mentioned it at the outset, this is the July 6th legislative session that will be on Monday. And moving forward on a summer schedule, our next, our next work session will be then at the end of the month until... And I think as Madam Chair was mentioning, that we are now taking live testimony at the work sessions. As you may recall, when we started this virtual odyssey, without knowing how long we would be doing it and at what skill level we would be doing it, we asked people to provide their input via email, and obviously, things have gone much longer than anyone would have thought or known, and the council has become very adept at this virtual teleconference method. So the council is now allowing live testimony as we just had at the work session. So that is how things will go until, you know, we resume in person. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I've been doing it all different ways, but we've been doing it.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. I just want to say, Ms. Bel Castro, I do see that someone is there, but I can't see it. I see that there is a...
A question. So, and just in case...
I can see it now. I do see it now.
Okay.
Ms. Councilman Quirk, there is a question, and you may, I don't know if you want to answer it now, or if you know Jay Glenn. He is asking, is there a roadmap plan for Security Mall redevelopment?
Yes, thank you, Chairwoman. Yes, Security Square Mall is something that Councilman Jones and I have been working on, along with our Speaker of the House, Adrian Jones, as well as the delegations. Security Square Mall is being, I mean, the capital and the investment are certainly there for Security Square Mall. There's a master developer, Howard Brown, who ultimately would like to work with some of the other owners to do a master redevelopment. And so the capital and the investment is there. It's more of a question of getting the owners, the five different owners, to kind of march almost under one plan. We've been really pushing that. The County Executive's Office has been very helpful with true dinner on the lead on the County Executive's side, and Councilman Jones has been a huge advocate. Speaker of the House, Adrian Jones, has been very, very strong. We have one roadblock right now, just one, and that's trying to get all the owners to agree on one plan. And it's, unfortunately, it's a little bit like herding stray cats. It's really hard to get two owners to agree on anything, let alone multiple owners. But because of things that are happening, for example, with Macy's, or what's happening with Bulleye, look at Sears, I think we're getting closer, and we'll keep pushing from the county side. But once again, I did want to reiterate, it's not a question of having the investment capital or the interest. We have tons of that, and we have tons and tons of great consumers in the area, people with disposable income, people that are looking for a better option. And so hopefully, we'll have a mixed-use type of project there. We'll keep pushing on it, and I know the County Executive's Office, along with Councilman Jones, the delegation, will all be supportive of what we can do. And so stay tuned, and hopefully we'll continue to have more positive development and communication as some of the free markets do what they do best, which is real redevelopment, real revitalization, and I'm grateful to have people like Howard Brown trying to lead the way on that. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Glenn said, "Thank you so much for your response." Okay. I believe this concludes today's work session. Everybody, take care, stay well, and see you next time.